So, welcome to the Tupelo Regular City Council Meeting of February the 7th, 2023. At this time, we're going to have an invocation by Janet Gaston and a pledge of allegiance by Buddy Palmer, and he'll be assisted by Mr. Andrew Agnew of Troop 12, Boy Scout Troop 12. Everybody rise.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for the opportunity to put that lie before us. I pray that you help us make sound decisions that will benefit our city both now and in the years to come. Amen.
Amen. Where is the young man? I follow your lead.
Please repeat with me the pledge of allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I called a meeting to order and asked the Vice President Travis Beard to confirm or amend the agenda and set the agenda order.
Mr. President, I'd like to amend the agenda by moving S1 on the study agenda up to item 29 on the routine agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second by Janet Gaston. All in favor? Motion carries. Proclamations, recognition, and reports agenda. Do we have any proclamations, ma'am?
No.
No proclamations? Recognition of Boys and Girl Scouts?
Yes, tonight we have Boy Scouts Troop 12 sponsored by First United Methodist Church for merit badges for communication and citizenship in the community. Marriage badge counselor is Duke Lowden. And when I call your name, please stand. Knox Gardner. Parents are Andrew and Joanna Gardner. Walker Tate. Parents are Kevin and Amy Tate. Chan Dotson. Parents are Bruce and Melissa Dotson. And Braxton Johnson. Parents are Alex and Haley Johnson. The one that said the pledge, I'm sorry, Andrew Agnew, son of Sam Agnew.
All right. Mayor, employee recognitions?
Yes, we have several. First is Adam Sharp. One of them. With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Adam Sharp for 15 years with Tupelo Fire Department. All right. Robert Brayden Palmer? With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Robert Brayden Palmer for five years of Tupelo Fire Department. All right. Next is Anthony Richmond Mallard. With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Anthony Richmond Mallard, Tupelo Fire Department, for five years of dedicated employment. All right. Courtney Holcomb? With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Courtney Holcomb for 10 years of dedicated employment with Tupelo Division of the Bureau.
Okay. At this time, Mayor, we have a presentation of commendations for several police officers. John, are you going to join him?
Anthony.
Anthony, go do it.
Anthony, come on down, Anthony.
Chief, do you want to call them all over now, or?
I can answer.
If you would, y'all would swing over in front of this backdrop, just kind of stagger a little bit.
First, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for giving us, allowing us to recognize these officers for their good work. For all our Tupelo Police Department, we strive to protect and serve, but this is something that was unique, and we think they should be commended. On Thursday, December 8th, 2022, at 11:00 PM, Charlie Schiff officers were alerted by dispatch on a medical emergency. The subject was a male caller. He had fallen in and near a large ditch somewhere between Highway 45, Eastern Exit, and Tishomingo Street. The subject advised dispatch that during his fall, he was impaled in the abdomen by a large stick. Officers quickly responded to the area and began searching for the subject. Officer Caldwell, Berryman, Ware, Ferris, Payne, Tucker, Lieutenant Carter, and Captain Mass walked through fields, water, mud, brush, and finally found the subject lying halfway down in an embankment. The embankment was steep and uneven, which made it difficult to get to the subject. He was located just west of Highway 45, bound exit to Eastern Boulevard. Also communicated with Williams and also, I'm sorry, also communicated with the subject until medics and the Tupelo Fire Department arrived on scene. It was discovered that the area where the subject was located was surrounded by adjoining creeks, which made the area unapproachable by vehicle or side by side. Officers Tucker and Ferris were able to cross the creek and get to Williams initially. It was then determined that he had a quarter-size and diameter stick lodged in his abdomen area. Once all avenues for the Tupelo Fire Department side by side to get to him were exhausted, it was decided that he would need to be carried out. Due to the cloudy weather and large power lines, the subject helped, the North Mississippi Medical Center helicopter was not an option. Tupelo Fire Department supplied a skid, which is a basket-type carrier, to put the subject in. Officer Tucker and Ferris, along with Tupelo Fire Department, placed Williams into the skid. A ladder was placed along top of the Beaver Dam and across the creek. Officers Tucker and Ferris and Tupelo Fire Department then carried him down the embankment through the creek and up the other embankment to safety. He was loaded up on ambulance and transported to the ER to receive further treatment. At this time, it is hoped that we could commend these officers on a job well done. It is a privilege to work alongside with them and have them on the Tupelo Police Department team. At this time, we would like to give these commendations to Lieutenant Jess Carter.
Officer Peyton Ferris. Officer Noah Payne. Officer Joshua Caldwell. Officer Zach Berryman. Officer Justin Ware. Officer Brendan Tucker.
This time we have public recognitions. We'll start with Ms. Nettie.
Sergeant, okay. I would like for us to be aware of that this month is Black History Month, and I would like for you to be thoughtful of the many activities going on in the community at the Oradon Museum, the museum downtown Tupelo. And also, if you see some of our leaders or people who have made contributions in the community, to give them a pat on the back or accolades for the many accomplishments we've made here locally. And so, this month would be, total month would be Black History Celebration, and also, this is Love Month. That's all of us learn to love everybody in the community.
Travis? Buddy? Don't have anything. Ms. Rosie? Janet?
I just want to just say that Tupelo Aquatic Center is teaching approximately 160 first graders each day to swim for the next four weeks during the week. And I think that just says a lot for our community, and these are a lot of kids that probably would never learn to swim otherwise. So, I want to thank all the people, the volunteers, the personnel at the Aquatic Center for doing this.
Chad?
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything. Mayor?
Again, thank you to the officers and thank you to Boy Scouts for being here and happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
All right, this time we're going to close regular meeting and open to public agenda. The first item is public hearings, which we have none, appeals, which we have none, citizens' hearings. Ms. Angela Nordean, could you come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes?
First of all, yeah, I thank y'all for letting me speak up tonight, but this is in regard of harassment over there at Timber Reed Department. And I stay in the E Building, E 30, and there's six people in each building. So, in all, there's 40 people and they senior citizens, but not all of them, because I'm not no senior citizen, and there's a couple of more that's not. But anybody else that stays in my building is a senior citizen, and I'm tired of calling 911 as an emergency contact. And I wish that the Housing Authority would get a security guard to keep extra control over there, because they'll come around banging on my window, air conditioning unit, bedroom window, hall door, and everything. And we are not allowed to lock the hall doors, and we have to go by their rules and everything. So, I talked to Tonya Williams on yesterday when I was recertified and stuff, and she said that she didn't see nobody. But there is somebody that wakes me up at different times in the morning. There is no certain time. If it ain't at 12:30 or 11:03 the last time, sometime, it could be 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning or before then. So, I will appreciate it if the mayor and all the people would, you know, just have this turn over to the urgent development, because the urgent development, that's who these apartments belong to. The urgent development is over. These apartments are Tupelo Housing Authority, and HUD is over. And so, they are not doing their job, and they want to charge for every little thing when you call maintenance to come out to fix something for you or anything. And that's not right. That's why we are paying our rent. That's why we pay our rent. It's for them to come out and fix things that don't belong to us. None of that in the apartment belongs to me, nothing but self-furniture and clothes and couch and stuff like that. But when they damage something or break the window out or anything, I have told Rosie Young, and I'm not going to lie about it, I have told my councilman Travis Beard, I have told Buddy Palmer a lot of times, and I even have talked to Ben Logan a while back, and the mayor, that anything gets damaged or broken out, I'm not going to be responsible for paying for, because I do not take no weapons on me. I'm not allowed to have a gun, knife, no pepper spray, or nothing like that on me. And I'm not going to do it, because I don't ever want to go to jail or go to pen for the rest of my life. And we should all act like Christians and be like Christians. And I have copies of the last, you know, two policemen that came out. And this Jeremy Montgomery, I know him well. He's a nice officer, and he's telling me that, well, there's nothing that we can do unless you find the suspect. I don't know everybody, and there's things that's happening over across the road in Ward 7 that shouldn't be. So, people should stop taking these guns, this violation on them, and even shooting people and stuff. There was shooting on Springs Street yesterday, and that's something that I would never do to save my life, because I'm a Christian, I act like a Christian, and I go to church to serve the Lord. So, I'll appreciate it if this could be turned over to the urgent development, because the Tupelo Housing Authority is not doing their job. It's supposed to end maintenance. And Tonya Williams is my manager. And what's her name? Tabitha Smith is over her and over the maintenance. And Sylvester Southers is over the maintenance. Sylvester is related to me, off from the car side. And my daddy, he's been dead for several years now, just they going on seven, 10 years or longer. And so, like I say, he want to charge me for every little thing. Sylvester Southers, that's not right. I'm on a low fee in car. I'm not able to work or nothing. If I was able to work, I would get out and find me a job. Now, people are not working, because they want to take the money and put it in their pocket and go out and buy drugs and stuff. But I'm not going to do that. So, I thank you all for letting me speak on this tonight, but I'm just speaking up for myself. And if y'all want to look over this that they put on the papers and stuff, everything may not be on there, but it is true. This is happening every night to me, during the middle of the morning. Thanks.
Thank you, Angela.
I'm going to pass this around. Y'all can look at them, and when y'all.
Hand them to Don, and he can get them to us. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Tamiko Hampton. Is Tamiko here?
Yes.
Hey, Tamiko, if you could go to the podium, state your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Tamiko Hampton. I stay at 3503 Robert Kennedy Drive in Tupelo. I'm a lifelong resident of Tupelo. I graduated in 1990 from Tupelo High and 1997 from MSU. I have a degree in sociology and a minor in corrections. I am a Shake Rag historian. That's what I'm coming here tonight to speak about. It says in the book of Amos, Chapter 5, verse 26, "But let justice run down like waters and righteousness like an ever-flowing stream." I come before you tonight seeking justice for an act committed by this August panel in 1962, where Tupelo's black community called Shake Rag was burned to the ground as a casualty of America's war on poverty. Promises of rebuilding were not honored. In 2023, you can right this wrong by creating and funding a Shake Rag museum, built on cooperation with the private sector exemplifying the Tupelo spirit. The museum will improve Tupelo's economic competitiveness, highlighting diverse tourism strategies, more inclusive, equitable, sustainable, and resilient, positioning the tourism sector to drive economic development and export revenue. Tourism is an engine of opportunity, broadening market efforts to promote Shake Rag to audiences through innovative platforms and new technologies. The Shake Rag Museum will target Elvis Presley birthplace visitors, boosting Tupelo as the premier travel destination grounded in Elvis Presley's musical influence, aimed to not only increase the volume, but also the value of tourism for North Mississippi. Today, Tupelo is experiencing a once-in-a-generation windfall, where smart technology and the use of efficient systems for procurement give our tourism industry a needed shot of economic adrenaline, bringing the highest possible return in Tupelo's investment in the Shake Rag Museum. Travel and tourism resurgence is essential to a robust and enduring economic recovery. Creating an economy that works for all Tupeloans, we translate short-term growth into long-term prosperity. By amplifying Tupelo's greatest tourism strengths, which is the unrivaled innovation of rock and roll music rooted in Shake Rag's joint and church sounds, plus our diversity of talent and the Tupelo spirit in the face of challenges, we will outcompete everyone. The Shake Rag Museum will provide 21st century capabilities, a modernized mission, support processes and infrastructure to deliver a world-class experience and customer service showcasing Shake Rag's blues and gospel assets. I invite everyone in the sound of my voice to the Oradon City Museum on this Friday, February the 10th, to experience the culture of Shake Rag exhibit, and on Thursday, February the 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, for a remembering Shake Rag, to educate yourselves of the relevance and importance to Tupelo's history. I also requested and received from the Mississippi House of Representatives a House resolution on Shake Rag in 2022. City Council people, please schedule a meeting with me to hear my presentation in full on the creation of a Shake Rag museum. I look forward to working with each and every one of y'all to bring justice 61 years later to the former residents and descendants of Shake Rag. Thank you.
Thank you, Tamiko. At this time, we're going to close the public agenda and open the regular session, and we have nothing on the action agenda, and we're going to move to the routine agenda. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the matter of minutes of the 17 January 2023 regular city council meeting?
So moved.
I got a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Rosie Jones. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 5, to have a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
I got a motion by Buddy Palmer, a second by Rosie Jones, and the bills are paid tonight by Nettie Davis, Travis Beard, and Buddy Palmer. All in favor? Motion carries. To have a motion to approve the promotional and advertising items, and where are they? Right quick. Have we got a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Travis Beard and a second?
Second.
And by Janet Gaston. Let me get them out here. Okay, we had one item for $5,000 for the Tupelo Reads event at the Lee County Library, and the book is authors unbound. Is that correct? Okay, good. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7, to have approval of budget amendment number three for the FY 2023 fiscal year.
I move that we would approve budget amendment number three for FY 2023.
Second.
Got a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Travis Beard. Kim Hannah?
Thank you. I am asking to amend three funds. I'm asking to amend the general fund. The general fund amount is $2,496,194. I'm sorry, $2,456,194. And the bulk of this is the use tax that we get from the state. We received two payments. This is the first payment of $2,247,194. I'm asking to place that in the capital fund. You'll see that in the general fund transferred out for the purpose of street overlay. This amount was 1.6 last January, so it has grown from 1.6 to 2.2 million. The other item is the general fund received premium pay for firefighters and police officers, and you'll see the increase in their budget for that respective grant in the amount of $209,000. Also, the second fund that I'm asking to amend is the capital fund. You'll see the money from the use tax from the general fund for street overlay. But in addition to that, I'm asking to make a correction of $25,000 of equipment that rolled over that was left out of the original amendment, as well as an additional $45,000 in maintenance. 25 of that is for fire hydrants. The other 20,000 is for the Gold Star Monument that is at Veterans Park. Both of those items have been discussed in work sessions prior, and I'm just asking that the budget be amended for that. An additional $35,000 is asked to be placed in the budget for a sprint, to purchase a sprint vehicle. We have part of the money, but not all of the money, in rollover and new money for vehicles, but we're asking to do that for the fire department for response, for medical calls, as well as an additional $500,000 that we're asking to use as a contingency. We are in our due diligence to try to get the state awards for ARCA projects. We have asked engineers to get these funds, to get these projects shovel-ready. We have not been presented all the bills for those. We believe we're going to be able to use ARCA funds for the majority, if not all of it. But just to be very transparent, we want to place this in the budget. We don't want to use up all of our other drainage money that we've asked you to place in the budget originally for this. So, hopefully, we can roll this back out for different projects, but just as a contingency basis, we're asking to put half a million dollars toward that. The last fund that we're asking to amend is the tourism, to deposit a donation from Burlington Northern Railroad. This is to reimburse the City of Tupelo for a legislative event, and this is in the CBB fund.
Any questions, Akil? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 8, in a matter, I have a motion to approve matter of continuing disclosure for FY 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Chad. Ma'am, Kim?
Yes, I present this to you annually, so this is just a housekeeping issue. But each year, we are required to file with Emma a continuing disclosure that includes all of our bond debt. Butler Snow has presented the engagement letter that I placed on the agenda, and we just ask that we carry that out and get this filed within the 190 days that it's required.
Any questions, Akil? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 9, I have a motion to approve a resolution for surplus for auction.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Janet Gaston, a second by Travis Beard. Kim?
Yes, if you've got any specific questions, we covered these in work sessions yesterday. This item, as well as the next item, is for missing items and items going to auction. I've got Rosalyn, who has basically spearheaded this with. I've got Rosalyn, who has basically spearheaded this with all the departments. It looks like a huge list of assets, but like I said, this is all the departments, and this is a huge effort to clean this up.
Any questions, Akil? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 10, have a motion to, in a matter of surplus and missing and not-working asset items.
I move that we would approve the matter of surplus, missing, and not-working asset items.
Second.
I got a motion by Nettie and a second by Buddy Palmer. Kim?
Yes, on the items that are missing, I would like to point out that we do have all the required documentation for that, and if you've got any specific questions, Rosalyn is here to answer that, as well as the departments, if you have any specific questions.
Any questions of Kim or Rosalyn? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 12, do I have a motion in a matter of...
Eleven.
No, 11. Okay, do I have a motion in a matter of approval to submit the FEMA assistance to firefighters' grant?
So moved.
Second.
Who's the second?
Janet.
Janet? Okay, I got a motion by Travis and a second by Janet. Abby?
This is a grant through the Department of Homeland Security and FEMA. It is due this Friday, the 10th. With this funding, the Tupelo Fire Department will purchase SCBA's air packs, SCBA masks, RIT packs, and incident management system software, so I'm just asking for your approval to submit this grant this Friday.
Any question to Abby? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 12, I have a motion in a matter of review and accept license commission minutes of January 19th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Buddy, a second by Travis. Tanner?
Mr. President, just ask the council to accept these minutes from the January 19th License Commission meeting. The only item that was taken up at that particular meeting was a recommendation to the council to update the city fire code ordinance, which we'll discuss on a later item.
Any questions, Tanner? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 13, have a motion to review and approve lien resolution for unpaid demolition of property located at 920 Blair Street.
I move that we would approve the lien resolution for unpaid demolition on our Blair Street and 920 Blair.
Second.
Got a motion by Nettie Davis, a second by Travis Beard. Tanner?
Mr. President, this lien is for property that the city demolished, and the invoice remains unpaid in the amount of $7,200. Just ask the council to approve the lien resolution until that invoice is paid in full.
Any questions of Tanner? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 14, have a motion to review, approve amended development agreement for the Presley subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Janet, a second by Chad. Tanner?
Yes, Mr. President, this item is for an amendment to the development agreement for the Presley subdivision, which the council previously approved. That preliminary plat that was approved, the developer is asking to amend that and instead to develop the property in three phases rather than a one whole entire project at the same time. So tonight, we're asking the council to amend, to approve that amended development agreement, and then we will bring back an amended plat for the council to review and approve. That is part of the agreement, is that the developer will submit an amended plat.
Any questions, Tanner? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 15, have a motion to approve a change to the Police Advisory Board.
I move that we would approve the change to items on the Police Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion by Nettie, a second by Buddy. Is John here tonight? Anthony handling that?
This is just a change of thinking policy. Basically saying that any board member who fails to attend two consecutive meetings or fail to attend three regular or duly-called special meetings in one count of the year without a excused absolute prior notice shall be automatically suspended, and evacuation shall be declared.
We changed it, and now we're having to change it back because they've changed it a number of times. They're going to meet each year. Any questions, Anthony? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 16, I have a motion to accept a donated trailer.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Travis, a second by Chad. Anthony?
This trailer is donated by Nation Craft Enclosed Trailer. It's going to be used by a traffic division to be able to haul the equipment that's definitely needed by a traffic division.
Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 17, to have a motion to approve an agreement of gray key license.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Travis, a second by Buddy. Anthony?
It's needed software for Investigation Division dealing with encryption with phones. And once again, I said it's just a long overdue, and we really need it.
All right, so basically, we're going to get software package that after a warrant's been issued, the police can use it to open an encrypted phone. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 18, to have a motion to approve bid 2022-050PW, Police Athletic League PAL re-roof.
Move we approve this bid.
Second.
Got a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Rosie Jones. Chuck Williams?
Yes, sir, this is a bid of signed contract in here to replace that roof for $133,000. We had several bidders that showed up for this one, and I think we've got 120 days to do it after it's approved. Please.
Any questions? All in favor? Whoop, whoop.
I just wanted to know, has any damage been done as a result of that roof leaking off? Has any damage been done inside?
I know they've been leaking for a while, but there may be some ceiling tile damage, but I don't think the floor or anything like that. I may be missing, but I don't know of any. Any damage in the five of them?
No, the one main issue is that when it does leak, we have to account for activity with the council.
So if we get this roof on, we should be good to go.
Any more questions? All in favor? Motion carries. I have a motion to approve bid 2022-049PW, a six-month supply of hot mix.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Buddy, a second by Travis. Chuck?
Yes, sir, this is standard six-month quote for a hot mix. It's our pickup mix, and we fix our potholes and dig out stuff like that. It's $115 a ton, it's the same as it was last time.
All right, good deal. Any questions, Chuck? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 20, I have a motion to approve the CBB board minutes of January 10th, 2023.
I move that we would approve the minutes of January 10th from our CBB board.
Second.
And a second by Travis Beard. Who is that? Neil McColl. Anything else other than just routine? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries. Item 21, to have a motion to approve Cadet Spank Arena minutes of December the 19th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Janet, a second by Chad. I think it's just routine stuff. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 22, have a matter, approve an emergency purchase for a 300 KVA pad mount transformers.
Move we approve.
Second.
A motion by Travis Beard and a second by Buddy Palmer. Johnny Timmons?
Yes, this emergency request for you is actually a two-fold situation. Right now, with the market like it is, they are actually charging metal escalation charges for copper, copper landings in these transformers, plus we're looking at 12-month delivery for a transformer. Well, the other piece of it is the underground conductor, which is 7,500 feet. We have a car park complex going in on the east side of town, which is going to pretty well complete that stock, so I just need to replenish it as soon as I can.
Any questions, Johnny Timmons? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 23, have a motion to approve a sole-source procurement from Mueller Systems.
I move that we...
So moved. Who was that? Who gave you the motion? All right, Janet, Janet's the motion, and Nettie seconded. Johnny?
Yes, the council approved us to go to an AMI system, it's a remote read system for water meters, and last year, we had to do a sole-source purchase. You approved that. This is just the renewal of that sole-source format.
All in favor? Motion carries. Item 24, do I have a motion to ward bid 2022-051WL, sale of surplus skid steer loader.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Travis, a second by Buddy Palmer. Johnny?
Yes, Brian leading y'all with surplus, a 2013 skid steer broadcast. We took sealed bids on it. I recommend to you, we've equipped a company for $37,000.
Any questions, Johnny? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 25, I have a motion to approve of an update to the employee policy 315, the donation of leave.
Move to approve this update.
Second.
Got a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Nettie Davis. Stephen?
Thank you, President Brian. Just a few points of clarification in this employee policy regarding donation of leave. The first change is that it would not require employee that is accepting donated leave for the care of a sick or injured family member or immediate family member, they would not be required to exhaust their own personal sick leave before they accept that donated leave, and that just puts it in conjunction with our sick leave policy. And then also, the second change there, they're required that the employee experience a catastrophic illness or injury of themselves or immediate family member, but it did not define what catastrophic illness or injury was, so we added in a definition to clarify that.
Good. Any questions, Stephen? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 26, have a motion to approve an update to the employee policy 316, first responder paid leave.
I move that we would approve the employee policy.
Second. I got a motion by Nettie Davis, a second by Travis Beard. Stephen?
Thank you, President Brian. This is also a point of clarification in this policy. This is one that we've had for a number of years now, and is, just to give you a little background information, is an opportunity that the city is allowed to give to first responders, policemen, and firemen that are injured in a line of duty. If they exhaust all of their personal leave to programs, it's being worked on because of the injury, this policy will allow us to compensate them up to two years. So what we did with this policy is just added in a definition of catastrophic injury or illness, so that the employees are aware of when this is available to them.
Any questions, Stephen? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 27, to have a motion to approve a resolution ratifying option-to-purchase amendment to Daybright lease agreement with Threadgill Enterprises and upon leasing written request to exercise option to purchase, authorizing mayor and clerk to convey property to leasing in exchange for certain real property identified in the option-like-kind exchange agreement.
Move we approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Travis and a second by Nettie. Ben Logan?
This is the, I guess, the final, other than reporting back to you with some deeds, the final step in swapping the Daybright building for some property on Elizabeth Street, about 17 acres for that facility. The Mississippi Development Authority approved this back at the end of January. The property that we are getting has been appraised at like $1.8 million, and so it will allow us to develop that area, and it also puts back on that factory down there, which is, you know, will add to the tax rolls. So it's a win-win situation. We've been working on it for quite some time, and you are authorizing the mayor, you're ratifying the amendment after MDA approved it, and you're authorizing the mayor to assign the deeds to Threadgill Enterprises and also accept the deeds from Threadgill Enterprises and another company associated with that of the Elizabeth Street property.
Any questions, Mr. Logan? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 28, to have a motion to approve an ordinance amending Code of Ordinance as Chapter 10, Fire and Fire Protection, Section 10-1, code adopted, removing from the 2018 International Fire Code, exceptions for NFPA 13R fire sprinkler system use on multi-story residential R-class buildings and requiring NFPA 13 use.
I move that we would approve this ordinance.
Second.
I got a motion by Nettie and a second by Janet. Ben?
We discussed this yesterday in pre-council. The state allows us to adopt building and fire codes that are no more than two versions behind. We are currently on the 2018 International Code series of fire codes and building codes. I believe that in the License Commission meeting, that there was some discussion of going to the 2021 building codes. However, in the 2018 building codes, there's some confusion about whether a 13R fire extinguisher system can be used for apartments and hotels, motels, that instead of a 13 NFPA or the National Fire Protection Association 13-type of fire extinguisher system, the 13 takes care of the building and life safety, the 13R primarily takes care of life safety. So it's a recommendation from the License Commission to go ahead and upgrade those type structures to the 13 system.
Any questions, Mr. Logan? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 29, I have a motion to approve major subdivision application MAJ SUB 22-05-Mapplewood.
Move we approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Travis and a second by Chad Meals. Tanner?
Mr. President, this is an application for an eight-block subdivision off of South Beaster Lake Road. The Planning Committee approved this application on January 9th, and tonight, we asked the council to approve it, and I would ask that the minutes reflect that in approving the major subdivision application that includes approval of the preliminary plat. I think we've had a little bit of, in the past, there was maybe a little bit of lack of clarity on the preliminary plat being approved when the major subdivision was approved. I just want to ensure that the minutes reflect that.
Okay, do we have any questions, Tanner? So this was only like six or eight houses, wasn't it?
Yeah, it'll be eight houses, and the lots will be a third of an acre each, so it's a low-vensity residential.
Okay, and when we discussed it yesterday, all that stuff with the engineering and all that stuff, it'd already been gone through and good to go.
Yeah.
All right, any questions, Tanner? All in favor? Motion carries. Mr. Logan, do we need to determine a need for the executive session?
Please.
Do I have a motion to determine a need for an executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second, Rosie Jones. Mr. Logan?
We have two items. We have two items dealing with real property. One, the purchase of real property, and the other, the sale of real property belonging to the city.
Okay, before we, all right, so with the need determined, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Again, go ahead.
Second.
And I got a motion by Buddy and a second by Rosie. All in favor of going into executive session, raise your hand. All right, before everybody gets up and leaves, Mr. Logan, will we be taking any action when we come out?
We will not do.
Okay, so we're not going to go back in session. So executive session, if you don't know, that means that according to statute, we're allowed to talk about personnel, real estate transactions, and some other stuff, lawsuits and things like that, without being open to the public. So at this time, we're in executive session, and enjoy y'all. We're not going to do any more action tonight when we come out.